Good evening, the City of Riverbank, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meeting, hybrid meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. This meeting will be held in accordance with the California Government Code Section 59453, subdivision Echo of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code 54950, except to Americans with disabilities. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the Zoom virtual platform. First is the last page of the agenda for the participation information. Let us pray. Father, Lord, we just come before you this evening, and first of all, Lord, we want to thank you for this great city of Riverbank. Lord, as we celebrate 100 years, Lord, thinking of those that have gone before us and all the work that has been done so that we can be here in this place tonight. Lord, I just pray, Father, that, Lord, as we gather and discuss business and recognize those that are working so hard to make this city a better place, that our hearts would be tuned in, that, Lord, we would be in one accord and an agreement. Lord, although we may share concerns and differences, that, Lord, at the end of the day, that, God, we would come together as a city, Lord, knowing that if we all do our part, that we would have this great city to continue on. And we thank you and we invite you to have your way, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Phone call, please.
Councilmember Odean?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez? Vice Mayor Campbell?
Here.
Fear O'Brien?
Here. There'll be no agenda changes, and if there's any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled items to be agendized, be considerate to declare the conflict at this time. Then, we're going to start off with presentations. I'd like to have... The reason why we have Gabby up here tonight is that she put in a tremendous amount of effort for our 100th celebration, which was magnificent. We had helped a, who we'll hear later on today, but a consultant or coordinator, but creativity and what happened over the course of the last year building up to what happened on Saturday, and today is actually the 100th birthday or year of Riverbank's... What is it? I guess, yeah, incorporation, exactly that. I couldn't even think of that. Okay, the City of Riverbank Proclamation, Centennial Celebration, August 23rd, 2022, 100 Years of Action. Whereas the City of Riverbank was incorporated on August 23rd, 1922, with the slogan, "The City of Action," and whereas the history of the era dates back to around the Civil War, a small settlement called Burneville would later become part of Riverbank's origin, and whereas the name and the growth of Riverbank was triggered by the Santa Fe Railroad, after the railroad came through in the 1900s, it brought with it machine shops, roadhouses, and water towers. Whereas the San Francisco and San Joaquin Railroad, built with the Sprecher Empire money, trailed down the valley, headed for the area. By the time it crossed the San Floss River here, it was owned by the assets in Topeka and the Santa Fe Railroad, which also built a large rail yard, roundhouse, and passenger depot here. Whereas the steam engine of the time needed resupply stations close together along with maintenance facilities, businesses, and roaming houses, so the rail crews grew up quickly, and whereas a request for the post office department for mail service here required a name for the settlement, and someone suggested Wilbur, after the right-of-way agent for the railroad, the postal department said, "No, there's already a Wilbur in Colorado," and it didn't want to add to the confusion, Colorado, California. Whereas two names, San Floss and Riverbank, were then suggested, and the simpler name won out. The new town was born and had a name, and began to grow. And whereas the railroad was one of the major reasons for the people came to Riverbank because it helped the city act as a central hub of San Floss, San Joaquin, and Merced Counties. By 1915, Riverbank had around 400 to 600 people, but today that population is close to 30,000. And whereas the city's recent growth, lowering housing costs in the area, have made the city a hub for businesses such as retail, shopping, entertainment, leisure, parks, and recreation. School and safety are only some of the essential components attributed to the growth. And whereas we are a progressive, diverse, and inclusive growing community with a small town love for one another, that is, that is what makes Riverbank truly special. The warmth and the care of our residents shows to those who live here and those who visit. Whereas, while many cities may find themselves along the river, only one city in the whole county, a whole country, is called Riverbank. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council does hereby unanimously proclaim August 23rd, 2022, as a centennial celebration, 100 Years of Action for the City of Riverbank. It will be signed by myself and the entire City Council. So, on behalf of the city, to the staff...
Thank you to the mayor and the council, and special thank you to our Centennial Committee. I couldn't have done it without any of them. We did start with the committee, about 10 of us. Slowly, we lost the members, and I especially want to thank the members that stuck with me through it all. They're not all here, but one of them is here. You've been my right hand the whole time. Leti Ibanez, also, thank you to her, she's not here today. Berza Reyes, a resident, Rich Holmer, former city manager, Adrina Panero, and Evelyn Halbert. Thank you to all of them for their help and the support during this time. These events that were put together by the committee were brainstormed and put together by all of us about a year ago, and we just hope that the community enjoyed them as much as we did. We had an event for every age group, from our Centennial Gala for our goal, to our Founder State Carnival, to car show and picnic, to our last event this Saturday, which was the culmination of all the events. And I want to thank Tamara and Carol for their help with that event. During that transition of the last event, I took the role of city clerk, and if it weren't for them, you know, stepping in, I don't think the event would have been as successful as it was. So, thank you. Thank you to the council for the support throughout the year. Thank you to our city manager for her support during this year that I've had to learn and grow and take on two jobs the last couple of months. So, thank you to her for being a great leader. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
I'm going to follow something like that, but we are going to have a couple more presentations. And tonight, we have a presentation, and then followed by a proclamation, followed by a presentation for Overdose Awareness Day. The City of Riverbank Proclamation, proclaiming August 31st, 2022, as Overdose Awareness Day in the City of Riverbank. Whereas the City of Riverbank City Council has recognized healthy communities as a priority, and whereas City of Riverbank Council does affirm and acknowledge the harm and hardship caused by drug addiction, overdose, and poisoning. And whereas we recognize the purpose of Overdose Awareness Day as remembering loved ones lost to overdose and poisoning. And whereas people with a substance use disorder recover if provided a necessary treatment service and support in their communities. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from substance use disorder treatment services from seeking help. Whereas greater public awareness about the substance use disorder and death by overdose and poisoning can change attitudes and behaviors towards people with this illness and their families. Whereas we acknowledge the grief felt by families and friends, remembering those who have died or had a permanent injury as a result of a drug overdose and poisoning. Whereas we recognize substance use disorders affect thousands of San Floss County and City of Riverbank residents, and whereas we resolve to play our part in reducing the toll of addiction, overdoses, and poisoning in our communities, which claimed the lives of 176 San Floss County residents in 2021, with countless others affected forever. Whereas we recognize the tragedy of death by overdose and poisoning. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council does hereby unanimously proclaim August 31st, 2022, as Overdose Awareness Day in the City of Riverbank. At this time, I'd like to bring up Kristi Hoffman. Come on up and accept this proclamation. She will give us a fourth presentation.
We do apologize to the members of the public as we have been having some audiovisual issues, so unfortunately, our screens on the side are not working. That overdose historically serves to...
The fentanyl crisis is... The fentanyl crisis is a silent epidemic.
What we're seeing in our community is pretty historic in terms of the number of deaths.
Drug dealers don't have ethics. They're not concerned about whether you live or die. They're concerned about how much money they're going to make.
They got toxicology back. It had 100% fentanyl.
My brother didn't know what he was buying. He bought a Xanax, took it, and, you know, that killed him.
This is not about getting high anymore. Now you're playing Russian roulette with your life.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much, Kristi. Move on to presentations, item 73, Homeless Action.
Mayor, council, good evening. We have Brad Hahn, who is the chairperson of the San Floss Homeless Alliance, who is here to present.
We're going to another tragic thing. Started in 2020. I'm on the City Council for... Was committed, I'm a volunteer. I don't need to do this. I'm doing papers who happen to keep a service can. Was adamant that we were going to... Where we are, and we've made a lot of progress. We're going to one of the last... Too late, because I... Anyway, what we're going to do is... To do, background strategic plan, snapshot of homelessness, eight goals that we came up with, and then putting the plan into action was what I wanted. The unique thing that was with this program, with this project, is we insisted that each city be represented in this. So, data that was... Actually, from you and City Council, people who turned in, parents were pulled out at the bank so that we could post. Will say, though, that most of them are pretty much... Speaking of homelessness and the cause and what to do about it, for all of us. So, to give you a little background, there's a community system. That is a legal entity that stood up by HUD. Heard by HUD, is going to have any HUD money. Made up of people that lived experience. It's made up of... Services for them, county employees and city employees. It's designed so that we know, we get information that comes up of what needs to really happen for... Ever been homeless, most of us. So, we need that kind of help. On the way, the county, Joe DeHaze, came up with this idea that... Experts from each city. All authorities, really the people who can... As I'm coming late, and it's just, there's lots of... As far as we are, in the whole process. Port next to Shaw, Santa Homeless Alliance meeting. But really, what is what it is, it's a synergy. We hear what's happening. We're... A couple meetings ago, we heard a project on the share. It was just that synergy that happens through... We started in 2020, and it was a long haul. 19 pages long. Maybe some nuances. Again, back to, I think we got the stock... Helping those neighbors. What we did is we did some of the technical stuff. We did environmental scan, which is all, what data is out there about home... Did community feedback. We had a... See, everybody filled out and sent in, and it actually, the... Very high on the number of... Very high on the number of people. And so there's some data that's trying to... You know, I just as an aside. I look better than that in my own mind. I only see myself about five minutes in the morning. But, so... Okay, so I'm gonna read you, and you'll have this... You can look in the, and actually the report, and it has this information. Riverbank feedback and data, what are the barriers? Community members identified substance abuse, and lack of home and affordable housing, paired with cost of living barriers to addressing homelessness. Further stakeholders explained that there is motivation, there is motivation in Riverbank to work with the county. Some of the things we're working on is funding to put millions of dollars in. You know, you're saying it's paid for through the community. So you have to spend the money, it's the saying, and then they... Most restrictions. To get a fund that we can pull on without... When the funders actually do fund. Some other barriers, Riverbank would like to see more funds available in the area providing outreach and support to people, granting homelessness some feedback indicating the feel of being overlooked when it comes to the subject and service development. Support Riverbank shareholders believe they could make a difference. So the things that we're working on right now is, there's a couple... Other projects going on, starting in many stages. Care team is now... Mental health and substance care to folks. There's a real trend, and people move to care teams provides. Full of their persons. Add to cheese, the homeless community members of Riverbank identify the highest priority for community funding of mental health. Further identify other targeted strategies to best homeless, including funding dedicated to... Experiencing chronic homelessness, and then starting a host house type... Commitment training and workforce development. Mental supported housing and housing programs will wrap. That's... Sure, though, and moving in those directions, senior support. Been on a city council, larger city, and that gets a lot of the attention, a lot of the money goes to these people, too. Happening is, as we've seasoned ourselves in dealing with larger, in ESO, now we're starting... Weeks ago, the county, five-year funding plan. Helped me with money. Well, they have. It was the DA, under the probation, the sheriff, the jail. They funded more for the care team, which is, you're benefiting from the... That team, which is a pilot program that we're doing, and they're just totally going out and just talking. And help get their lives together. I want to point out, the host house, I think that's a... I personally believe that the key to homelessness is people change. All three stuff is not gonna talk. I think worst is children, but... But giving them the opportunity to change. In order for them to make the... By the way, there's a Santa Fe second partner. Giving us a lot of work. Homekey is another funding source that has... I was personally involved with one in ESO with two... Go in one-bedroom apartment, apartment, eight... I've been homeless or intending to be. A guy goes through there the other day, I'm... Do you wanna do is, um, the best chance is better in life. Mental supported housing. They gave us enough money to build it prevailing ways. Kids are giving us money, string ways. What it requires is a very robust... One of our big areas, I just met with the CEO at United Way, and they're committed to helping our nonprofits really... Keep the word as they can handle. When I'm going around talking. I basically want to do, I said, what's your nonprofit? Those kids can live there instead of like, oh, they can't be, they can't be charged any more than one-third of the median, of, one-third of the... People start putting money away, and start... There's a live-in manager, and they are truly apartments. There's no... Other space, other parts, their apartments. And we put in heaters, electric... So it's all those things put together that are really, really, they're really, really neat about it, too, is we're building at the upper end. We got people involved, got them ready to make changes, they start to make changes in there. So if we get the upper end of this, there is housing, then... So the eight goals that we have are... Oh, one is increase availability permanent housing. Two is increase... Availability of mental health. We're brainstorming about here that might act, a whole amount of... Heads in the county. Doing it a little bit smarter than ending the program, but having a... Little things we're working on. Equity and governance, and a lot of stuff on equity, but the way I, I, it's gonna treat everybody. First is increased coordination services. Area. Assistance and group coordination. For their public health. Those really look like losses. By themselves, they're not gonna do. Because you're dealing with a system. Years ago, nobody was talking, and some person was on... Nobody's talking to each other. So what we're trying to do is get it to where we're all working together, and the brain, how are we gonna agree with? Free them to make change. We came across, I was having a conversation with the sheriff, and he said... He said, you've got a problem. So start for that, and we... So we started already on the increase, on the... My job was to get every city manager to agree to be on a work group to... Mental supported housing. The other city managers, ones that have been reluctant. Being that this is... At a meeting today, we're gonna expand on all eight of those. Not necessarily do them all, but to get them all to find. As them. I believe it's about a two to three-year process. A lot of systems that need to... So we're implementing the plan, we're working on it. Actually found a guy yesterday that's willing to head the equity part. He reinvented wheel, this had... He's saying, isn't, it isn't like a... Does something. He's seen every one of the priorities that we were having. Providing a service. There's an... It's really, that was... Hey, we come up with an idea, so, okay, who's gonna do it? Okay, Brad. Next month, you've gotta come back and have this done, and it's really, really... Freezing to... This is the incident command system. Start set. Get the right people in the room to make the changes, and exit. Create another system. People working on is get the care team in there every... Man's gonna do the people. Who's the best to be there. You can join the... Care if you'd like. Come to the homeless alliance meeting, Tuesday, excuse me, Tuesday of the month. So, and you can come talk about anything homeless. Hope the seminar... That's what it's about. Trying to get that, that going, and it, and it... Everything that I've talked about has exceeded my expectations. We're where I was hoping. Trying to try and... I study at St. Darlene, working, helping Darlene, working with her on a project, a job, and... So, and I just, wondering, had a conversation. Any director in turn, and they had a... Trying to do our best to create new things, and if you see something that you don't like... Aims to like to see, here you have, this is... Really open to it. Been a pleasure to serve on this. Who'd wanna be on a board? Right? And Louis was one of the first, and he, he bugged me, trying to get stuff going, and Louis a lot because of what you did, it really helped him. Anyway, that's the end of my presentation. I have some comments, I'm sure everybody up here is... Going, it's a difficult job. But you've made some comments, some things that we believe... Sure has, and come in a... Home sale case. Just wrecked it. Didn't know that when you started with... Here that, as our program matures. Filled out like we're doing on... Those who have success. Don't have all of... Don't have a... The people that are homeless believe Riverbank gives them something. And they have the treatment. Care house, and you could give us a little update on it, but we're having a modular... Hundred facility. Also building. There, we don't let... It's a reason to... Other homes. We're doing a lot, we... Was trying to help those out. Have the homeless. They have to take a reset, but as we, we can still talk. We can stop. Hey, you, you... We weren't talking. We can, but not right now. So it's through. Okay, thank you. Thank you. I use different.
That's my husband's cooking, he needs to cook all the time. What's the deal we had, I had to be home by six?
Have to have a company. To have the council to meet him. I'll give you a couple more minutes, and then we'll...
Rachel, Rachel. Rachel, remember you're just weekend. Oh, I missed you. He's a glass of beer.
Yeah, that's good.
Yes.
Okay, Brad, we're going to continue with the meeting. The city council meeting is now recombining. We don't know how long it's going to last, so we'll try to get through as many items as we can. Are there any questions or comments for Brad? Us in the...
I have a comment. Brad, I am very, very happy to hear how you've worked and gotten people in government together to get something done in a reasonable time. Because that doesn't happen very often, and you should feel very proud about that. Seems to take centuries sometimes to get little things done, so keep up the good work.
That is, I'm here to tell Riverbank what to do. Here to help Riverbank do... Trying to build a support system.
Just quickly say thank you, Brad, for everything you've done, pushing forward this regional effort, but still letting Riverbank have the ability to kind of do what it, you know, follow its own path, so.
I too want to say, thank you for your leadership, and with me being the representative for Riverbank at the CHA meetings now, it's very exciting to hear what the other cities are doing, and just like you just said, that, you know, cities are saying, oh, wow, they're doing that, wow, can we do that in our city too? So it's exciting to see that everybody's trying to come on the same page instead of going off in a lot of different directions. So I'm glad to see that we have this, this document, and it's not going to show on the shelf in Riverbank, we're going to do something about it. Thank you.
And I'm especially excited about the equity note and it being incorporated, is that in the DNA rather than its own track? So I'm looking forward.
Again, Brad, thank you very much. Normally a public comment, private public comment. You go up there, you have to come up and see. Yes, you can do that. He's successful, when he goes out, the word mob him. Okay, we're going to continue on with item seven point four, Cheese and Wine Festival, that'll be given to us by Cameron State.
Good evening, council and mayor. We're here tonight to kind of give you an update on what's going on with the Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival that's happening in about a month and a half on October eighth and ninth. So I just kind of wanted to start out, as of today, we have about seventy-five applications in for vendors, those are arts and crafts, commercial and food. Food and arts and crafts. And to stay more selective with arts and crafts this year, and that's commercial, we want to make sure that comes out, is going to enjoy it, and, you know, be able to stop and do something for service oriented. If they're insurance or something like that, we're looking at maybe taking one application or more than two. Some of the changes that I wanted to talk about, so the layout, it's going to be a little different this year. We're going to put barricades up at Second Street and actually Seventh Street. So it's changing a little bit, not too much, but we wanted to extend it down to the community center, so we could incorporate the community center in that area, and use the community center for the new wine and cheese expo tasting area, instead of the venue down here on Second Street. Then, we've increased our vendor fees, not by too much, we actually increased our arts and crafts to seventy-five, but, and we took away the one hundred and fifty, which is the local fee. The reason for doing that is because of the increase in resources over COVID and everything else that we've had to deal with. But we also found that a lot of people like to say that they lived in Riverbank, or they did this in Riverbank, and they didn't. And it wasn't really for us to make those decisions. So anyway, we went ahead and just took out the local one hundred and fifty dollar fee. I will say, if there have been a nonprofit that has called me, and for some reason the price has been too high, we have worked with them to allow them to come in, because I think that's very important. And so we didn't just say, no, this is what it is. And we are working with people in those situations. And then also for our local merchants, we also had a special fee for those who are on Santa Fe. Food, we increased them from four hundred to four hundred and fifty, and then actually commercial, we ended up reducing from four hundred to three seventy-five. But we also increased our pricing on tasting fees from, we only increased it by five dollars, so we went from twenty-five to thirty in advance, and then thirty-five to forty at the door. Beer and wine, we do provide the alcohol permit through Simply Divine Foundation, and then we will have the ticket booth, except for credit cards, cash. Tickets for wine and cheese will also be sold there, wristbands and ID checking will be sold there, or checked there, and we give them wristbands. Security, we've been meeting with our sheriff and fire department, and our parks and recreation, and this year we will have nine security guards on Saturday, nine on Sunday, and then I think four additional, we've agreed on for the wine and cheese tasting venue area. Radio, for advertising purposes, we'll still work with Cumulus Radio Station this year, we're doing radio on all their stations, radio advertising, plus on some social media. Also, we're going to work with Laser this year, they're a Spanish station, and I just talked to them on my way here, so we're working out some ads for their... We want to make sure that we are reaching all demographics and everybody's included. And so, again, banners will be produced with our posters and information that's needed for that day, print media, newspapers, and we'll also be doing those in English and Spanish. This year, setup and take down, we're looking at doing it on Friday, prior, so we'll be doing about noon time, I think we decided that we would be doing closures, street closures, and starting setup, fencing, contract delivery, things like that. And then, yeah, vendor setup, starting at four o'clock that day, we'll start allowing vendors to come in. We'll probably start with food vendors, just because they've got the big trucks and they can come in, they take longer to set up. And then about six o'clock, arts and crafts and commercials come in them. We might change those timelines a little bit more, but we want to make sure that we get our fencing set up and other things necessary, prior to the vendor setting up. Residents, letters were sent out, and English and Spanish to residents, that will be affected, and that was over here on Seven, I mean on Santa Fe. And that was the residential area, we, actually Carol went out and she knocked on doors and talked to the residents in the area, plus recreation sent out a letter with parking passes. And then also the businesses, they've been, we've talked to them too. And then as you can see, that's our boundary map. Over by the community center, we're going to start with the car show, and then we'll go to the carnival area, and then the, you know, like the regular vendors and festival area will take place. Little bit past, in between second and third. Have two stages. Possibly three, I keep having bands call and want to be involved, so it depends on if we can find room, but right now we have two stages. And then the wine and cheese tasting venue, like I said, that's going to be held at the community center. We have to have ten wine vendors that come in, presenting their own wines, talking about their wines, and also six cheese vendors. We currently have some five confirmed right now, those are the ones that are confirmed. The craft beer, we will have that. The community center, what we would like to do is when we set that up outside, we will be fencing that area in. We're going to have music out there this year, and along with different craft vendors outside. And the radio station DJ, he's actually going to be at the community center, he's going to be doing announcements, kind of getting everybody excited about what's going on. Starting other sessions, ending other sessions, and so forth. And then, we're still planning on doing two hour sessions this year. Wine and Vibe Car Show, that's going to be on Saturday, and I know the date says October ninth, it's already been changed. Anyway, that will be Saturday, that is going to be held kind of in front of the community center, the reason we did that was so the cars could actually come in and then leave that same day. We've had talks about the dinner, we had the dinner last year, some people loved it. And so we're trying to decide, with the vendors setting up on Friday, if we could possibly do something on Thursday night, or as the vendors are setting up and doing their thing, and we still have the dinner in the plaza. Maybe not such a sit-down dinner, but maybe something more fun, bringing in a band. You know, I even thought about like the pizza oven, or something more. You know, I even thought about like the pizza oven or something more casual, but you know, where people can socialize and we can bring in our sponsors and elected officials and everybody can enjoy kind of a kickoff. And that's it, any questions or answers?
Is it possible?
To give us advertising, I know they do it, I hear it all the time. And I think it might bring more outsiders if they did it. So would suggest possibly using TV, that station or another one to, you know, help publish it.
I agree with you, and I have reached out to the date, Sacramento, and which is I think K C R A. And so I've reached out to both of them, I did last year. And we still have about a month, so I'm hoping that maybe we can get some publicity from them. Then also, I think it's still running fine also, that came out and did the video last year and was here that day.
Can you go back to the map that had the community center and your three beer? It's going to be at the community center and the other two?
Now, so there, it might have looked like that, but I just kind of have them. Down as far, in fact, they're going to stop at Fourth Street. So they will be enclosed between, oh, just in fourth and, so I think you can see right there, one is right there at Third. And then the other one is close to Fourth. I, I, I need to move it down because we need to, it's such a, I feel like it's kind of enclosed in that area. It's such a small area because you have the carnival. So Fourth Street, we're not going to really end right at Fourth, we're probably going to end between Fourth and Fifth where it's going to be fenced in for the beer, wine area. So that, that last beer station is probably kind of in the middle between Fourth and Fifth. Close to the carnival area. Okay.
Probably not too close to the carnival area?
No, I'm trying to keep it down, I mean, I think they just put it there just because it, yeah, because it's going to be actually fenced in where we're going to be drinking, carnival's not fenced in. Good, people are excited that it's down at the community center every time I talk to somebody, yeah. Absolutely, and I think even better this year, the radio station, excuse me, Sal is his name, and he's got some connections also. So we're hoping to even have like a bigger competition. All right, well, thank you very much.
Chief Rider will provide an introduction to this item.
Good evening, mayor and council. So we were approached with an opportunity about a public safety drone program. Didn't know much about it, so I reached out to our resident expert who's Sergeant Craig Osmerson. So Sergeant Osmerson oversees. This program is unique in the fact that the drone actually responds to a call for service as we get to. Rider, all right. So the idea is that a drone responds to the call ahead of time for the, to provide updates to the law enforcement. But I will let Sergeant Craig Osmerson come up here and give you the details of this, and he can explain this trial program.
Hi, good evening, mayor, city council. My name is Craig Osmerson, I'm a sergeant with San Francisco. I'm with about eight years now. The sheriff's department already has a fully functioning drone program. This technology is pretty amazing, it has been. It's meant for public safety. It'd be amazing if what that tape did. This in no way is a replacement to. Please, a supplement. First discovered this program as a drone first responder program that the city of Tula Vista partnered with Motorola Solutions, who is the platform provider of the technology. As you know, I'm sure you've seen the helicopter overhead from in your city. Very expensive to operate, it requires manned personnel. Full bill, and with that. This program I would like to bring to Riverbank to test, a beta run to see. I don't want to get too in-depth in this, I know this meeting's been running long, so I'll make this short. Like I said, we already have a drone program that's already.
Kathy.
Kathy.
Okay, at this point, we're going to continue this meeting. We'll give a seventy-two hour notice prior to our. We won't, we'll continue now. Which microphone? I'll do both. I'll make this quick. So I won't go too in-depth on what a drone program consists of, other than the sheriff's department. We have a fully functioning one we've had for the last three years. You guys are actually benefiting from that drone program currently within the city limits of. We have several drone operators that have that ability to put up the drones. Right? So these are just small unmanned operated aerial systems and commonly referred to as drones. So, one, one back. So Chief Rider basically explained real quick what this thing is, a drone first responder program. It just gives the ability for the drones to be stationed at particular locations that are pre-deployed or deployed upon a call for service. Now, this is a completely and one hundred percent reactive approach, it was not proactive, we're not out there looking for calls for service. This is something that when the nine-one-one call gets placed, then drones are working with dispatch. The drones would launch, no different than a helicopter would. And that drone, because of the city limits of Riverbank is relatively small, has the ability to then outreach with cameras on itself and be able to on and go unseen of any, of any call for service within minutes. That helicopter is going to take three minutes by the time the crew spins up and flies all the way up to Riverbank. So the intelligence and the information that we can get so quickly can allow our deputies and our command staff to make those critical decisions much, much faster. This is quite beneficial for public safety and then officer safety as well. So what can a D F R, a drone first responder program, provide? De-escalation techniques, if you have somebody out there walking around with a weapon. And we can see that on the drone camera footage, we can relay that to deputies who are then responding. They can take an appropriate action and not force a situation, but they can actually de-escalate. So now the drones can provide P A announcements, hey, we see you, drop the gun, whatever the case. So there is a way for us to de-escalate simply using the drones. Public safety, of course, because of the quick response time for the drones. And then officer safety, of course, imagine responding to a nine-one-one call of people screaming in the background and that's all that you get. Sometimes that's what we get as deputies and you're, you're in charge of responding and diffusing that situation. Information is key, so the more information that you have before you go in there, the better that the outcome of that call would, would. Quicker response times, of course. The drones upon initial dispatch would have the ability to get up within a couple of minutes. And then because of the geographic area of Riverbank, these things would be over the scene rather quickly. Enhanced efficiency of deputies responding and then the increased quality of life. So if we can provide a quicker response and mitigate threats much quicker, I think overall that would keep the citizens of Riverbank safer. Motorola Solutions, this is what I spoke of, this is the company that actually provides the platform that would allow us to fly these drones essentially through an I P based address. So on your desktop, you can actually fly a drone. When I demoed one of these, I was able to fly a drone in Mexico. And I was able to manipulate the entire drone in Mexico, and I was able to fly around and look for beach and everything else. They have safety mitigations in place, but we still have a trained observer who is licensed with the Aviation Administration that is connected to that remote control should an in-air emergency happen. They have the ability to take control over and land that drone. So what we're looking at is September thirty-first, during this trial, there's going to be an increased drone activity over the sky. We're not going to do this all hours of the day, man, man-hour purposes and for overtime considerations. But in, on September thirty-first, Motorola will be here. We would like to do a trial demo just to see what their product is capable of. And then we would like to be able to log a couple of stats of these things can go unseen of a call. How much information we can actually get, how efficient are these drones in work? And then how many calls could actually be closed out without even having to send a deputy to the. Have a assistive person in a park. That drone can go overhead and search the entire park. You can actually divert that deputy to a more serious call that might be holding on the board. So over the span of thirty days, which would be our free demo from Motorola Solutions, we would like to reactively respond to dispatch calls for service using these drones. And again, like I said, log the data. These are rough estimates and these are subject to change, but I said a couple of hours each day and really only in the course of a couple of days. I have to do and I don't be here. So we'll get caught of what it would look like. And we can work with Riverbank Police Department through the sheriff's department to see maybe some bigger times of days to see if we can get better, better data. This is basically what you will see flying overhead. It's merely going to respond to the call, gather the information and then return back. So on the, it's across the street. This, what you will not see, there's obviously some, there's some testing that these things are out there flying. The active reason for. Your words, proactive policing, right? You will not see us out there just smoking around. Things that are just that, this will respond. And obviously, kind of a stop. So, on what's the information that we would like to gather, that's still kind of to be determined at this point. But I did kind of speak on just to, we will log that data and even see if Motorola Solutions' product. I think once we do establish drone first responder program is a fit, then we'll come back with the actual stuff that we obtained and then we'll. Want to play, I think it's only like two minutes long, this will kind of sum it up and give you guys a snapshot of exactly what will look like or should look like. Quick YouTube video from Tula Vista Police Department partnered with Motorola Solutions. And this will show you essentially what this program is. Now, Tula Vista does not have air support, manned air support. They do not have helicopters, they do not have airplanes. They rely solely, one hundred percent, on drones for that aerial advantage or that aerial coverage. They've invested a lot of money into their program, basically give them support in the skies. We're lucky, you guys are lucky here to have not only drones, but. This, a quick video with Tula Vista Police speaks to, to speak of the program and how beneficial it has been for them.
Everybody wants de-escalation. It's not just a buzzword anymore, it's become a part of our everyday vocabulary. Everybody wants it to be safer, everybody wants everybody to survive and live another day. Our drone as a first responder program is, in my opinion, the number one tool for de-escalation that we have.
So for our priority one calls for service, from the moment we receive the nine-one-one call to the moment the drone is overhead is about two and a half minutes. As the officers are responding to this call, the drone's already been overhead for about three minutes and the teleoperator has been relaying information to the responding officers in real time.
Having a tool that gives us the ability to get to the scene as quickly as possible is critical. Because when you are able to provide your officers with real-time information, they can make better informed decisions.
There's no other source of information you can give me that would be better than a live video feed on what you're about to walk into. So in terms of de-escalation, it gives us a couple of extra moments to look at a situation and find out, are they armed? Are they not armed? Do they need our help, do they not? And that's invaluable.
When that officer makes their final turn onto that call for service, they have every bit of information that they need to be successful and resolve that situation in a calm and safe, peaceful manner.
The last thing we want to have to do is use any level of force. If we can de-escalate and we can use these drones to give our officers better information, it just makes no sense not to use it.
Of everything I just spoke of, but that's essentially the program. This is nothing more than a demo to see if their product is fit is and to see if it's being for the sheriff's department and then for any of our contract cities. Riverbank was selected, geographically, I think, with the river and the population and the shopping centers. Just on where the city is located. All the way to Patterson, which would be my next choice, and that's an hour for me. For me to get here and respond and be able to manage and monitor. I'll turn it back over to Steve if he has anything else to add and then I'll be.
May I just if you have any questions? So based off the, the video there, it's, so it's its own, the Motorola program, it's its own system? It's not actually embedded in the nine-one-one dispatch, correct?
Unnecessarily embedded in, it just works. Get through, able to fly it through her I P browser. Independently, they're operating separately, but as you can see, Tula Vista. The call for service and the drone is already taking support, it actually goes from. Have to be, to be off. So upon the initial call, the drone is already working. That's why they're saying within two minutes of their, of their, of their data, those are already. Two minutes of very valuable information. People are here, what clothing are they wearing, which way are they going? That's, I guess, most of. They work, they're independent operating systems that they just kind of. They work, they're independent, uh, operating systems that they just kind of.
911, I know they're kind of struggling with like staffing issues there too. So this is a whole new program, new training, stuff like that. They're, they're on board already, they're pretty.
So again, this is just a test to see if the software is, is simply even feasible. If it is feasible, obviously the staffing has to be up. And our ultimate goal would be to have somebody like Tula Vista, somebody at the dispatch center where you have live information coming in and then information going out.
Uh, so I did have one resident reach out, uh, they were kind of concerned that this drone wouldn't play soon.
Yeah, so this, this program is by no way, uh, shape or meaning going to change the way we respond to call for service now. Uh, we are still going to respond to every single call that we, that we received. Uh, if the drone is to get through the scene and to possibly unfound the call, we would do like no different than we would if we drive up to the call and if it wasn't found it, we would call the person back, do everything in our power to solve it. But it's another tool to help us, uh, be successful.
No way to replace ops.
I have a, I have a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, I'm, my justice has the rivers and the river's always been a problem. And I would have liked to seen this years ago because I think it's ideal. I know we're not supposed to fly, but can it just go down the river to check it? Cause it's an area just three times of the year that things go on that shouldn't go on. And I also want to clarify, um, the same person that spoke to a council member in the river, he spoke to me. And I want to clarify for that person that this is not, that this person thinks that their drone is going to make a decision of what happens. And I want to clarify that that isn't so. It relays it back to the police officers to help them get there quicker and to do their job better for safety. So I hope that'll clarify that for that person. But I think it's just a great situation because you can't be everywhere. And if you can get there quicker, uh, to save lives or to stop fires or even help the fire department, it's just natural that it's something that's got to.
So responding regarding the, uh, the rivers, um, obviously we're not going to be proactive, um, on those things. But however, if it's the busy season, we've got a lot of raptors out and that is, that is a reactive, right? We're responding to make sure everybody's safe so that can be used for a helicopter, which can be fly the rivers as it is now. This would be another way to supplement that.
Would there be, uh, an increase in cost to the city?
During this demo, no, this is a free 30-day trial, uh, type of to lift by Motorola. With anything, so. Great value of any, really just a demo. That would be down the road.
So you'll be back with some back for whatever.
I can definitely give you guys a, a report after we finish the program to ask if well or dead or did not do.
Um, did you mention if the videos are recorded when they're dispatched? And, um, is there data? I know this is fairly new program in general, but is there data, um, from Tula Vista or other cities, um, in terms of, you know, how it's responded to crime in the city in, um, past years?
Data, so I could do, um. They did exactly what we're doing now and they've. Going to further add. They do, they close their boundaries. I would like to do the same, even though this demo is just to see.
Your current drones capture any kind of data at the moment? And drone system at the sheriff's?
Yeah, we, we record everything, no different than our body camera.
For operational purposes, do you have to be located in Riverbank operated drone or can you do it from your office, um, or? So it's reactive and one person can, so the cost. Or let's say Riverbank, um, Patterson and the county decides to use this system, have different drones, can you operate?
We can operate as many drones as we want. It would just be a license, uh, you know, per, per license, state, um, for us, if we wanted.
One of the things we want to test too is, you know, when these things fly, they have limited flight time, right? So they have that battery changes, right? They have to come back some of this, so it's the same concept. If one is flown from, like you say, the main sheriff's office from Riverbank, someone has to be there to turn it on, to launch it. So the technology's rapidly evolving, right? To where eventually probably they have some kind of docking station that it lands on and so. But again, this is just the very beginning of it and that's what we want to kind of.
Right, thank you very much. Move on to item seven point six, young adults fighting tobacco presentation, Chelsea.
Hello everyone. Waiting for my PowerPoint to come up, I'll go ahead and introduce myself again. Uh, my name is Chelsea King and I am president of the Young Adult Fighting Tobacco Coalition. And today I'm going to talk to you about the importance of addressing tobacco waste in your city. A little bit about myself while awaiting, I grew up in Thierry, we always forget about Thierry. We're close to Sherlock, I actually grew up along the border at Sherlock and Thierry. Um, I live on a farm and I actually recently graduated from California. So very, very excited. I'm there and to be. Okay. Right, so I just want to start out by talking about what YAP does, who we are. Um, at YAP, we work with rural communities in California to address the negative impacts, um, created by the tobacco industry. We do this by leading cleanups, spreading awareness through education and promoting policy change. But we also ask for the space for young adults to practice and improve their leadership skills and citizen engagement. I've been working with YAP for the past few years and during that time I have been lucky enough to help my community by participating in cleanups, conducting presentations, participating in research and speaking with decision makers such as yourself. And actually very recently, YAP did a cleanup in your neck of the woods. Actually, uh, we did it by a community center on Santa Fe Street. We partnered with local organizations such as Speed Dan, Car Movement and Sierra Fund. We did this this past May and during this cleanup, we collected 1,362 cigarette butts along with six bags of trash in the span of one hour. These numbers do sound shocking, but unfortunately they are not surprising. And your city is not alone. Many cities have to deal with this. And this is an impact not only our health, but our environment. I just wanted to talk a little bit about tobacco waste stats. Um, right now cigarette butts are the most littered item in the world with 4.5 trillion deposited into our environment every year. And the trillions of cigarette butts that are getting littered into our environment are sources of pollution that leaks chemicals into our water and our soil. And it's important to remember that tobacco waste is toxic waste. Cigarette butts contain 7,000 different chemicals and it's a huge contributor of plastic waste. And looking at tobacco waste biodegradability, we find that most tobacco waste is not biodegradable. Cigarette filters are made from a substance called cellulose acetate, which only degrades under severe biological circumstances. In practice, cigarette butts that are deposited, um, on roads and on beaches do not biodegrade. They only break down into smaller pieces which dilute into our water and our soil. Living in the Central Valley and growing up on a farm and we know ag is important and it's very important for our communities. And we know that our soil and our groundwater is very important for agriculture. And so we can see how this is such a negative impact on our most precious resources. I'll just here for a second. Enjoying my beautiful slide, looks very hard in this. Thank you. And light cigarette butts, this is a light, um, light, but, um, e-cigarette waste cannot biodegrade under severe circumstances. So we can't only worry about conventional cigarettes, we also have to worry about e-cigarettes, which are on the rise, um, especially in young adult vaping is becoming a huge epidemic. And unfortunately, e-cigarettes, um, are discarded on streets most of the time and they mix with, um, different litter and get pushed around by different weather events and eventually break down into microplastics. Again, it's important to remember that all tobacco waste is toxic waste. Um, and e-cigarettes also generate more plastic, electronic and hazardous waste. And so when creating this presentation, we began to realize that facts only go so far. But stories from young adults just like me can make a huge impact and offer a different perspective of this issue. The two of our members, including myself, have agreed to share why working with YAP on tobacco waste is important to us. And so now I'm going to read you our stories. First story was submitted anonymously by one of our members and so I will read it to you now. I became a civically engaged young adult attending community college in Tulare County where I campaigned for two district supervisors. The candidates I worked with organized garbage cleanups, which included a third of this waste being cigarette butts. Through receiving public mandate, the officials I campaigned for used their position to better coordinate the garbage cleanup, discipline citizens and businesses that contributed to offered dumping and directed county waste services to follow more environmentally sound policies. Working with these decision makers on this campaign made me realize the impact the tobacco industry has on our world. It also made me realize the difference we can make by working with local government to combat this issue. That's one member, uh, one member's story. The next story is actually one of mine and unfortunately I have many stories dealing with the negative effects of commercial tobacco, but this is one of them in regards to environmental use. Um, when I was in elementary school, I used to walk home from school with my older brother. One day when we were walking home, I remember beginning to notice cigarette butts alongside the curb. It became a game for me and my brother to count the butts as we walked home. Looking back now, I feel sad to think that I didn't find it odd or question why they were there. It wasn't until I discovered YAP when I realized the immense issue this has on our world. So those are some of our stories, there are many others. And now we want to offer you some potential solutions. So we know that you are currently working on your environmental justice element. So I wanted to go ahead and share some potential policies that you can always include. You can improve health by considering the adoption of policies that ensure tobacco retail vendors are limited in disadvantaged communities. I believe Riverbank has already adopted tobacco retail retention policy. What I've heard, it's amazing, uh, but it can only be strengthened in disadvantaged areas. Another option is you can increase safety by considering policies that promote smoke-free in public and private multifamily unit housing. Many public opinion surveys have been conducted about smoke-free multi-unit housing and have shown that majority of residents approve a comprehensive policy. Another option is to reduce pollution by adopting a policy that would ban the sale of single-use plastic tobacco products such as single-use filters. Finally, you can always, um, create safer outdoor spaces by adopting policies that prohibit tobacco product use in parks and on trails, which we know Riverbank has already done this, so yay, good for you guys, you guys are doing great work, the city of action. But you can always increase signage in these parks and that's something that we can definitely help you with at YAP. And so I just wanted to offer some additional solutions as well. Um, you can always encourage your community members to quit by sharing sufficient resources. Ticket California is an amazing organization that offers many free sufficient resources. You can also install groups to look at the feasibility of banning single-use plastic tobacco products as well as other highly littered single-use plastics in your community. Another option, more cleanups. We will be doing more cleanups in your area and more cleanups can always be done to protect your beautiful city. And finally, partner with local organizations. We want to help, this is what we are here for, to help communities such as yours. And there are many organizations that would love to help your city address this issue. And so with that, I just want to say thank you so much for your time and on behalf of YAP, I hope we can continue this conversation in the future.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to thank you again for, you know, uh, being in our city and for helping us. And thank you too, Amy, for, uh, your support and expertise as well. Um, and we definitely will continue the partnership at least with, um, well, Riverbank and, and through other opportunities, so.
And please keep us posted on those future cleanup dates.
We will, we definitely will.
If you're going to speak.
Name is Thelma Louise and I work with the homeless here at Riverbank and I have since 2020. So you just gave me a great idea. There's a lot of time when we have big events, we have raffles. Now I'm thinking that it would be a great idea is how many cigarette butts can you bring to me at that event? And the one with the most cigarette butts, reward them with a $10. That just gave me a good idea, what, what do you think about?
Don't make decisions on these.
Okay.
It's against the law, we don't do that.
Okay, but I just thought it was a good idea, I just wanted to share that one. Idea and thank you.
Chelsea, thank you again. Okay, the long-awaited public comment, no action can be taken at this time. Members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Uh, per person time cannot be yielded to another person. And we're going to also instate in a topic note cannot last longer than nine minutes. And please do not repeat what other people have said in front of you. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. I know we have library here tonight, so a few will come up. And then I know we have Riverwalk that would like to speak and if there's others, I'd like to take them in groups, go ahead.
I enjoyed all the different presentations. Very informative. Good evening, councilmembers, the narrow Brian. My name's Dicky Holt and I'm the branch manager at the Riverbank Library. And I'd like to tell you about our upcoming event. Storytime, uh, has been off for the month of August, so we start back in September. It's held on Tuesdays at 11:00 AM before we open, we open at noon. And, uh, we have both English and bilingual storytimes and we alternate to it. So customers need to sign up online at Santa Fe Library.org or they can give us a call if they don't know how to do that, we can help them over the phone. Um, the Friends of the Riverbank Library are now meeting quarterly and our next meeting is this Thursday on August 25th at 5:30. Book Club is reading The Last Year of the War by Susan Meisner. And the discussion is on Tuesday, uh, August 30th at 4:00 PM. Stop by the library, we have extra copies if you want to, um, join us. And, um, one of our favorite things to do is talk about books. Then we have a craft, um, we're starting to do crafts again. Um, so it's on August 31st, the last day of August at 4:00 PM, which is a Wednesday. And we're making animal pencil toppers. And, um, they have to call the library to sign up, um, because we're making maybe a smaller group than normal. And then we have, um, master garden classes, uh, every month. This next one is going to be September 10th on Saturday at 2:00 PM. And they're going to learn about composting. So, um, come by. So, um, come by and learn how to make your soil rich with kitchen scraps and garden waste. And I hear that they're going to give away a compost bin to one lucky person at the meeting. So, um, come by on September tenth. So, all of those programs are available at the libraries for free, and it's because of the eight percent sales tax, we are able to offer those services. Make sure and come to the library and, um...
Thank you. We'll go now with Riverwalk. Thank you.
Councilmembers, my name is Jamie Agers. I live at seventy seven thirty McHenry Avenue, Modesto, California. That's in the unincorporated portion of Spanish County, and it's within the project area of the Riverwalk. Um, I have a different message for you tonight that I haven't shared before, and that is that today, my husband and I are celebrating our forty-second wedding anniversary. Some of you might think it's most borderline insane, why would you be here tonight at a council meeting? And that is because we're passionate about this issue. We purchased our property nearly forty years ago, and we've lived on site for thirty-five years exactly this month. And we're passionate because we're in an ag area, which is where we wanted to reside. It's prime ag land. I've shared that with you many times. Um, we currently have replanted now for the second time our property in a new almond orchard, because the trees were rather old when we bought the property. And my latest career move is being a farm laborer, out, um, toiling daily in our, uh, orchard, um, cultivating it and, um, trying to keep it into the beautiful property that is just like the apricots behind us. We, we bought there. We believed that it would remain in ag area because the property behind us is, hmm, probably at least eighty feet, maybe more, below us in, uh, former river bottom land. And, um, we also believed that it would never be developed because the state of California considered placing it into a farm conservation easement, but then declined that opportunity because it didn't seem a wise use of resources, because they thought it would never be developed, couldn't be developed, because it's in, um, floodplain. It's, it's all one hundred and two hundred year floodplain area. So, we're very concerned now that you have a proposal before you that we're told by Donna Kenny, that the draft EIR will come out any day now, um, to consider placing as many as thirty-three hundred homes and businesses in an area of prime ag land. So, my, um, my concern for you is that homes should be placed on soils of lesser quality when the project comes before you. We urge you to vote no.
Thank you.
My name is Bernard Agers, sometimes known as Barney. I live at seventy seven thirty. Um, I've spoken many times here for my opposition in Riverwalk. Uh, tonight, my eyes were opened to two more subjects, two reasons. This will be a magnet for homeless people. You look at, it's about two miles from your bridge here to the McHenry Bridge. Look what's going on in Sacramento, along the river. There are fires daily. There are homeless living on both sides of the river. That's four point some miles of prime magnetism for campers. Think about that. About that. Think about the, uh, number of cigarette butts and other tobacco waste. Um, the people that clean up the Tulamie River haul out tons of trash. That's what would be looking, we would be looking at. It's, it's wrong place for a development. Prime farmland, it's prone to flooding, and look what just happened in Texas. Thousand-year flood came along in one year. Could happen here. We've been here since four ninety-seven, and that river was ready to come under, under the levee, not over. Anyway, I urge you to vote no if and when it comes to a vote. Think about these things. Thank you.
Dan Westone. I live at seventy eight twenty four McHenry Avenue. Um, and my house overlooks the river bottom. Um, again, I just urge you, next hundred years, we're celebrating first, if you guys could go down and being remembered that somebody saved that area. Get that object in. Next voice.
I have someone I'm doing with, please.
Please, what happened?
Good evening. My name is Christina Avalos. It's, um, a new virtual organization, we have a gigantic action. And I'm here to expand an indication to our, to our county. Cultura is an event that we have on the twenty-seventh, it's a Saturday from ten AM to seventy AM. We're going to have, um, food, uh, a lady, she's going to come from Mexico, some traditional food also. We're going to have a pure pizza music, so I'll give you a little more of the pasta. We're also going to have dancers, so just to invite you and join us at that event. It's again, Exo, Mochocan, Supultura, Saturday, the twenty-seventh, from ten AM to seventy AM at the, uh, community center.
Do you have flyers available?
I'll be getting these tomorrow.
I was only able to see it on St. Francis of Rome website.
Yeah, it's something like this, it's, um...
Okay, we, uh, we would like to have it posted.
Certainly. Thank you so much.
Mayor O'Brien and councilmember. My name is Karen Mitchell, and I've been a Riverbank citizen for thirty years now. And, um, I appreciated what you said, Mayor O'Brien, about our city being named Riverbank for a river. And I just hope going forward that we show, we haven't done, it's just in terms of my, what I've been able to observe in this county and in the city, we have, we can do a much better job in terms of protecting the river and river habitat. We have built way too close to the river, and I think now, especially in the time of climate change, not just, uh, we have also people now to think about, um, in terms of flooding. And so, for those two reasons, uh, and I also see in my own neighborhood, um, the houses that are on the river bluffs, before one, uh, party could sell their place, they had to put a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar retaining wall in. So, I think the issue with erosion, with flooding, and also just to protect the river and some river habitat, is to honor our city's name, Riverbank. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Hinado. I live in... ...how he develops, and I hope you also even researching the area and the impact of land Riverbank. You know the reasons? I'll say them quick. During the time I have, it's a pity in the... We have much land that you're already, you have land that's already going to... I hope that you know and...
Twenty seconds left. Um, sorry, when you start speaking.
Good evening, Mayor O'Brien and councilmembers. I come before you about the general plan update review.
This is general plan, that's a different topic. Go ahead.
Yes, this is not Riverwalk, it is connected. You mentioned in the last meeting, Mayor O'Brien, in your comments, that the review for the general plan is almost complete. I will quote it. Um, "General plan review will be out. It will address the water situation, environmental justice, and it will capture some of the plan that improves the quality." I got that from the minutes and also from the Zoom. So, my question is, where is the public, um, contribution to this general plan review? I hope that the public will be part of this review because it is, we are stakeholders. Thank you very much.
To correct that, Annabelle, we are conducting a general plan technical review, which is just started.
We will be issuing the request for proposal for the...
Okay, the request for proposal will start, and then that'll start the process.
We will be hiring a consultant in order to be able to do that. So, the request for proposal is just to hire the consultant, and then we will begin the technical review. But at this point, no work has been done with regards to the general plan.
I just read the comments that, that said...
Thank you very much.
Um, can I finish?
You walked away, I thought you were done.
No, I'm not, after I found out. So, I still hope that the public will be part of this because it is the general plan.
All required public hearings will be held with regards to the general plan update.
Okay, and you said, in the commission, right?
So, all required public meetings will be held with regards to the general plan update. Currently, we do not yet have a consultant who has begun to develop a plan for publication or for the work itself.
We're done discussion. We're done discussion. Go ahead. Comment?
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one, um, Zoom.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, I'm on, um, good evening, uh, mayor and the council members. I'm honored for this opportunity to share with you the low-cost California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program. My name is Duriya Sayed, and I'm an analyst, um, in the Community Relations and Outreach Branch at the Department of Insurance. And I just want to bring our Low Cost Auto Insurance Program because it is a state-sponsored program created by the legislatures to offer liability insurance to income-eligible, low-income good and new drivers in California. This program offers liability insurance for three hundred and seventeen, uh, dollars for a good driver over twenty-four years old a year if they qualify regardless of the immigration status in Stanislaus County. And the, to, in order to be qualified for this program, uh, the person just needs to have a valid driver's license, California driver's license, or an AB sixty license. Value of the vehicle must be twenty-five thousand or less and be sixteen years old. It all depends on the income guidelines. So, four percent of household, uh, the ma, uh, the maximum income, it can be sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. Um, there cannot be a bad driving record, so it's available only for good or new drivers. And in order to apply for the program, uh, like I said, um, California license and AB sixty license, valid car registration, down payment of twenty percent of the annual premium, and proof of income. It can be a pay stub, W-2, or even statement of benefit card from CalFresh, Medi-Cal, or other county programs. If the person cannot provide the proof of a, um, income document, that person can fill out a self-test form to verify they meet the income guidelines. Um, so, as I said, it's very easy to apply for the program. It's, uh, you just go online at www.mylocostauto.com and take the eligibility questionnaire. It's only seven questions. Or you can apply direct through a certified agent. Um, you can go on a, on a website and ask questions through our chat. It's also available in Spanish, and our hot, uh, our number for My Low Cost Auto is eight six 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 zero two eight eight six one with any questions. Um, and it doesn't take that much, that long. If you, if people have all the forms and the down payment, uh, they could get insured the same day by applying directly with an agent. And besides this program, I just want to, uh, just want to talk to you and let you know, remind you that I'm from the Department of Insurance, and we are very here to help with any insurance questions. We have a dedicated staff of experts that can answer specific questions, and if we don't pick up your call, we call you back in just two minutes. So, we just want you to know that, um, uh, please go visit our website at insurance.ca.gov or call our hotline number, eight hundred nine two seven four three five seven, and we'll walk you through any of your insurance needs. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any comment? I see none. Any further public comments? Then, uh, we're going to go move on to the consent calendar, consisting of item nine one, wave reading, item nine two, approval of July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, City Council, uh, Board Minutes. Item nine three, adopt the resolution authorized on city, sample man teleconference, public meeting, pursuant to Assembly Bill three sixty-one. Item nine four, authorization for out-of-state traffic requests to have the finance staff attend the Caswell Annual Conference in Salt Lake City, Utah. Item nine five, acceptance of the pa, pavement restoration and valley gutter project and authorization follow notice of completion. Item nine six, final parcel map, zero eight, that twenty twenty-one for Cilianos, Jimenez fam, family, and the property located at thirty-eight, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty-three California Avenue. Item nine seven, second reading by Titleoni, the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero four, approving general plan amendment to modify the existing low-density residential schedule and use designation to high-density residential HBR and to rezone the existing single-family R-one site to planned development PD for a proposed forty-unit senior apartment complex on two point zero one acre subject site, this thirty-three eighteen Pocket Avenue. Is there anyone wishing to pull any items? I'm wishing to pull item nine point three. Anyone wanting to make a recommendation on nine one through nine two, nine four through nine seven? I'll make a motion to put the consent calendar with the exception of nine three. We have motion to approve the consent calen, calendar exempting nine three. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Odiva?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes with change five zero.
Okay, item nine three is the Assembly Bill, uh, three sixty-one, which allow us to continue a hybrid virtual meeting environment, which is geared specifically for elected officials that would have to, uh, that can modify the Brown Act. Uh, if you're not at a meeting, that you can, uh, call in without, uh, stating where you are or have public in attendance. So, uh, what I would like to do is have staff take a look at a recommendation on continuing a policy to allow the public to call in. If we, as city council members, uh, have to call in, uh, if we're at a conference or someplace, that we have to post the agenda as we have had in the past, and also, um, have, allow, be in a public place and allow the public access to... and also, um, have, allow, be in a public place and allow the public access to, uh, our, our portion of the meeting. Is, with your concurrence or not, I would like to have that as our proposal for 9-3. Otherwise, well... Question, please?
Okay, with, um, continuing it as, that if we have to call in, be a public place.
As, as we used to before.
Yeah, as we used to. And I think that I really, um, appreciate that we're allowing the public to have area, I mean, not area, but a forum to be able to, yeah.
So what that will do is that as we get our, our policy, it can be an outline of what you want to do, but what that would prevent is stopping the meeting because we've lost connectivity. Continue the meeting as long as we have some type of method, as minutes, to report our action and our comments. Okay? With that modification, uh, I'd like to call, a roll call for 9-3 modification. I understand what you're saying.
Councilmember Odiva? Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 11, 11-1, Resolution Authorizing An Animal Control Service Agreement For The City Of Oakdale To Provide Animal Control Services In The City Of Riverbank.
Mayor And Council, Norma Torres Manriquez will be providing this staff support.
Good evening. Let's see how long this audio will go. Um, this is just a formality to be honest, but we have been partnering with the City Of Oakdale um, since 2009. Uh, we now have a full-time officer and we have, um, close to 30,000 residents and grown. So they've been doing an outstanding job. So Sam's gonna go over a few of the updates and changes to the agreement. Currently, as I mentioned, we have a two-year, it's one full-time officer and we actually have a two-year agreement that's just expired at the end of June. We have two shelter attendants, that is a shared cost with Oakdale. We are both part-time. And we have a supervisor, which is a, um, sergeant that supervises animal control eight hours a week. That is our portion. Uh, we do have dispatch to Oakdale for animal service costs 24/7. Annual cost that we have, we've got two years, 232, 287,000. We only have a few proposed, um, changes and updates. One is making it a five-year agreement. We will continue to have the full-time officer. We will move into one full-time and, and, uh, maintain the part-time shelter attendance. Again, those are shared costs between Oakdale and Riverbank for the shelter attendees. There's no changes to supervisory hours and dispatch services. The one that I think will make our parks department very happy will be extending some patrol hours between May through September. The officer will continue to be 40 hours per week, but we will see probably hours that will start between 10:00 AM and maybe go till 6:00 or 7:00 PM. So those hours where our parks aren't used the most, especially in May when, you know, weather gets nice and people start coming out to Jacob Myers Park, they bring their pets and sometimes they don't always follow their usuals. We will be able to have some animal control presence without having to wait for the on-call officer to come to see. Um, it is a five-year agreement. Uh, the cost that we're looking at for 2022, 2023 is increasing to 273,546. Um, no major changes. Again, we've been happy with the services thus far. We have very few complaints. Oakdale, I've been working on feral cat, um, kitty programs, uh, and they've been very cautious. One, to include us in discussions, and two, and keep it in mind, to face the of all the community members. Don't we have anything else to really share on the contract? Just reminding everybody, say, there's new to your pets, um, one female cat can't actually have 420,000 kittens in seven years. That's the lifespan that usually that they'll have kittens. And dogs, obviously, um, a little bit less, but still, in seven years, a female can have up to 96,000. I'm available for questions if you have any.
That's with offspring. Not one puppy can do that many. I'm, I'm happy with, with our, oh, go ahead.
Honestly, I don't have any questions, just a, a comment, um, about, um, I had, I think we have had improved service because people are often, and I haven't had any more folks on the ground with.
Don't see anything, no issues with the cost summary, uh, the two changes there for the two to the five-year contract, no issues there. And, uh, part-time to the full-time retention will, will help with retention, so I'm good.
Any thoughts, so I'm willing to support it. Hey, uh, do we have a motion? Public comment? One for public. Do not bring it back with consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve item 11.1.
I'll second it.
A motion to approve, and a second on item 11.1. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Odiva?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item, you're welcome, thank you. I think they, I like the no-kill policy. 11-2, consider, is it minute or minute order? Order, uh, the approval of a city formal responses to findings and recommendations from the 2021-22 Stanislaus County Civil Grand Jury Homelessness, The Elusive Definition Of Success Report Case Number 2-2-Bat 05-Golf-Duliet.
Good evening, Mayor And Council Members. On June 16th, the City Of Riverbank received a letter from the Stanislaus County Civil Grand Jury regarding a report that homelessness, the elusive definition of success that was issued by the grand jury and was an investigation that they undertook during the 2021-22 fiscal year. Um, the report actually requires a response from the city as well as other Stanislaus County agencies that are all working together to address homelessness in our county. Uh, so a few of the items that they highlighted was that homelessness is a growing problem around the county, uh, around the country and in our county as well. Some of the causes they highlighted was unemployment, lack of affordable housing, poverty, mental health, substance abuse, domestic abuse, and family conflict. Some of the findings that they highlighted were the, that effort to coordinate amongst agencies to address homelessness are pursued, but that they lack accountability. Um, significant dollars have come into the county, uh, in order to address homelessness, but they do see that there's a lack of accountability which tends to undermine public confidence. So basically what they're saying is that although we've received, um, millions of dollars to address homelessness in our county, visually, they are not seeing an impact. Goal with the report is to raise awareness on how to address this is, issue as a community. The report highlighted six findings and five recommendations. And of those six findings and five recommendations, the, um, the CSA agency or Community Services Agency, the CSO, which, um, Brad Hahn shared about earlier today, um, and the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance or SHAW, as well as the nine cities, were requested to, uh, respond to these six findings and five recommendations. So I have prepared the City Of Riverbank's response to these recommendations in collaboration with the responses prepared by the Community System Of Care or CSO and the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance or SHAW. So finding number one, the number of homeless in Stanislaus County fluctuates from year to year, but is increasing over time. This trend was exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, we partially, I believe that the city partially agrees with this particular finding. Yes, it was exacerbated by COVID-19, but that was mostly due to the closure of a lot of businesses and residents that were suffering from not being able to receive immediate assistance for rental or mortgage assistance. Um, I do want to remind everybody that the way that we count homeless in our community, whether they be sheltered or unsheltered, is through a point in time count or pit count. And it's as of a specific date and as of a specific period of time on that date. Um, in 2022, that date was changed. That date is very consistent from year to year. It's always held at the end of Ju, uh, January, but this year, the, the date was actually changed due to COVID-19. So what that caused is, the date, the new date that was selected in February was a day after a very long cold spell. Um, so we believe that a lot of our homeless residents, um, actually moved to other locations in order to find additional shelter. A lot of the volunteers that actually helped on that date in order to do the pit count were no longer available. We typically reserve our January date for that pit count and so a lot of individuals already had, um, that February date reserved since they had anticipated that it'd be in, in January. Um, and as well as the county did roll out this year a new system to catalog the information that's received from our homeless population. I can say although it was convenient to carry around a phone to be able to gather the data, it was a little bit difficult to navigate and the number of questions that are required to ask, sometimes the homeless population are just not willing to sit down and answer those questions. Um, so we can't say that the data was 100% verifiable. Meaning number two, the most significant causes of homelessness are lack of affordable housing, substance abuse, and mental health. Those are probably about the top three reasons, but not all-inclusive. So I do agree that that is, um, does cause homelessness, but it is not an all-inclusive list. Efforts to better coordinate the system of care are underway. These include the SHAW at the policy level and HMIS, which is the Homeless Management Information System at the operational level. Now, the Homeless Management Information System is not an organization. It is the physical computer system where you catalog information regarding homeless individuals that are, um, looking to seek services. Um, so yes, I agree that the city, um, and the county are working very closely to make sure that all agencies that receive funding for homelessness are using this system in order to better catalog and gather data regarding our homeless, um, population. So I do want to highlight that the city is a member of both the CSO and the SHAW and we are always in represent, uh, represented or represented at the, those meetings. Meaning four, since over half of the homeless each year are in the care system for the first time, efforts to prevent homelessness have not been successful enough. Without greater preventive success, homeless cannot be reduced. I honestly cannot say because the city itself does not have that data, um, whether to agree or disagree with that. It is the county and the CSO and Community Services Agency that we rely on for that information and are responsible for keeping that information. Therefore, I cannot say with certainty that the city agrees that half of the homeless each year, um, are in the system for the first.
Um, when I read that, that does not make sense. You have 50% in the homeless in the system for the first time that year. Then the other 50% are in the system next year. You're saying that everybody's scared of homeless and will get a new bat?
That's what they're saying.
They can't say that.
And a lot of times, we're not sure, as I mentioned earlier, we're not sure if the data is actually correct because a slight change in the name or if a name is taken down incorrectly is visually, um, can see different characteristics of that individual, then that automatically puts them into the category of a new, um, homeless individual.
Yeah, and looking at the, um, the homeless management system, domestically, the way it's supposed to work is that when a person goes into the system, you look at what, how they come in. You look at what their needs are and then this system will identify those needs and take them through that system and get them ready for housing. Their ID, get their, uh, key card, all the stuff to get them training, job, whatever it may be so that the total income is ready for housing, basically where it's supposed to work.
I think there's a lot of people that are on the verge that if they don't get the help, you're gonna have a much bigger homeless group. And so we need to keep in mind, look for some of these people to follow their own. You've got to look at the money a little more and everything, economic, grooming, and, and et cetera, find some way to help them stay there and just remain there with a better job to function then. But we don't have more coming in because it's interesting.
So that goes to finding number five, that despite the enormous funding for homeless programs and despite the fact that there are many individual successes, overall, the system to date has not reduced homeless. So that was the finding they made. Um, I do agree with that program, with that statement. Um, we do know that recent COVID funding, although we were infused with, with a significant amount of funding, um, due to, um, COVID-19 and care funding, um, a lot of that was spent on providing a safe place for individuals to be able to quarantine, not necessarily to address additional housing. Um, it was there to address access to personal protective equipment or PTE. Um, and then subsequently, additional funding was received to that to be able to provide rental and utility assistance. So I think that came maybe a little bit too late where that would have been one of the priorities in order to avoid having residents, um, become homeless. Um, the city provided care funding to nonprofits for utility assistance, food provisions and funeral assistance. Um, so we provided funding in order to be able to, to address that. Um, and then we also allocated our own American Rescue Plan funding in order to purchase the Sierra House, um, as well as the Stanislaus and Daxton properties. Going to be our first shelter and transitional housing program. And what I do want to highlight and has been a very difficult thing to navigate is all of the red tape that comes with that funding. Is that there is a significant amount of paperwork that you have to do just to apply for the funding. There's a significant amount of administration after the fact that has to be provided to, whether it's the state or to the county in order to report on how the, that funding has been spent. So it does hinder a lot of agencies from being able to address issues quickly. Having to wait for a certain process in order to, just to begin to get approved, um, for spending those funds. And so that does make it difficult for, for a lot of the agencies. We have seen that, obviously, um, with the delay in the Sierra House being able to start, um, work on that project. So, um, I do, do agree that despite all the funding that's there, it has been difficult to get. And then finding number six, there's insufficient accountability for the effective use of homeless funds. And while there are ma, many agencies that are accountable to their funding sources, primary responsibility for measuring accountability and effectiveness rests with the, with CSA, um, the Community System Of Care and the SHAW. I partially agree with this. As I mentioned before, ransom with an enormous amount... I partially agree with this, as I mentioned before, ramping with an enormous amount of reporting requirements. And spending for homeless comes with an even greater responsibility of making sure that you are using that homeless management information system so that all of the information is catalogued. We have a clear representation of the individuals that we are serving. The question is, how consistent is the reportable data between agencies? You have one agency that requests information in a very specific manner, and a totally different agency that's providing very similar funding that requests information in a totally different way. So I can see that across agencies, it's difficult to compare apples to apples because the data they're collecting can be. Now, there are also recommendations that the civil grand jury has made. More accountability needs to be introduced into this. So I partially agree with that. Similar to response number six, where I stated that reporting from one agency to another can vary, and so I think in order to fully be accountable to our residents, the reporting should be consistent, that everybody is aware of the performance measures that are put into play and are able to look at one report versus another and know that the data is exactly what's being collected is the same. And with that is the presentation that we had tonight on the homeless action plan and the goal to make sure that there is more collaboration amongst not just the nine cities itself, also amongst the counties. Recommendation number two, more focus should be given to preventing homeless. And to the extent that these funds are not earmarked for another purpose in the budgeting process of each jurisdiction, priority should be given to allocate these funds to affordable housing, substance abuse, and mental health services. I partially agree with this recommendation. What I will say is that the CSOS, county, and other state jurisdictions receive and provide funding on an annual basis for this purpose. What makes it difficult for a city to be able to apply for the funding is just the amount of work you've had. And a prime example that Mr. Hahn highlighted today was the home key application. City initially, at the beginning of the year, approved a joint application with a local nonprofit for a transitional housing program. The amount of information that they required us to collect, while we see that it's important to have, was so significant that literally the application was due at 11:59 PM. And just because of all of the work we needed to get done, we submitted at 11:50. Just because it's so cumbersome to wade through the applications and gather all that information that it dissuades an agency from wanting to apply. So we rely on the CSOS, we rely on the county, or we should be able to rely on them to help each jurisdiction to apply for these funds, rather than trying to take our limited resources to try to address this issue. Now, the City of Riverbank has been extremely successful in going, venturing out on our own with everybody's guidance to obtain funding. And so we were able to do that successfully in order to get the shelter rehabilitated and be able to get that up and running. And then we've done that through the grants from Senator Agnew. And so, but that has been through our own efforts and through the county's own efforts, not through assistance from these agents. Recommendation number three, all cities and the county should continually be encouraging the construction of significantly more affordable housing. And of course, 100% agree with that. State of California has put mandates on us, so not that we should be encouraging, we are mandated through the regional housing need assessment to make sure that we have four season procedures in place that will allow for affordable housing to be able to be constructed in a more streamlined manner.
It's not only just affordable. We're supposed to be building in the next four years, four years, 3,700 homes. And if we don't move forward, we can be homeless. So people that are objecting to, should be actually objecting to.
Recommendation number four, all cities should report annually to the Community System of Care and Sanosoff Homeless Alliance on the steps they've taken to produce more affordable housing. I agree with this recommendation, but it's as easy as sharing our annual progress report on our housing element. Available to the public, we hold public hearings in order to bring that forward to council and get adopted. It's submitted to the state of California, and as I mentioned, we need to be consistent with all of the, and so our housing element, annual progress report. And that is all of the recommendations that we, and findings that we were required to respond to. We will be sending this letter, if approved by the city council tonight, to the civil grand jury, and they will make that a part of their resource. Available for any comments or questions.
They addressed it to me, I'm glad you're signing on.
You're welcome.
It's very thorough, very good report, very good letter. Any public comment on this? And I move it back to the council for consideration.
Take a motion to approve item 11.2.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve, and it's taken on 11/2. Go call, please.
Councilmember Odivis?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
Item 11th workshop, American Rescue Planner.
So Mayor and council tonight, I wanted to bring back a workshop for you on the American Rescue Plan funds that the City of Riverbank has received. Back in May of 2021, we held an initial workshop that was prior to the issuance of the final guidance from the Department of Treasury. That was prior to the City of Riverbank receiving the final estimate of funds. So at that point in time, it was just an initial discussion that was held based on the guidance that had been provided as of that point in time. Looking back at that city council meeting where we held that initial workshop, a lot of the recommendations that were made to the previous city manager and myself with regards to this funding was to look at ways to address homelessness. As I mentioned in the previous staff report, the city council has been extremely successful in going to obtain alternative funding in order to be able to address that. We received the grant from the county, which was an ESC grant for our street outreach and the shelters, and we received a $2 million grant from Senator Agnew. Therefore, I feel that now is our opportunity to revisit the funding that's currently less unallocated in order to do some of the projects that we've kind of put on the back burner, knowing that we have already made efforts to address homelessness with alternative funding. So the, just a brief background, American Rescue Plan signed into law in March of 2021, allocated funding for state, local, and tribal governments. We received $5.9 million over a two-year period. So we have received that money in our bank account. The focus was economic recovery, stabilizing government, and uplifting our communities. These funds are required to be encumbered by December 31 of 2024, which basically means reserved, but we do have until 2026 in order to fully expend those. These were some of the allowable uses, COVID-19 expenses, lost general fund revenue, set of vaccine clinics, provide support for your downtown core and small businesses, broadband expansion, IT infrastructure, PCE, a whole slew of different allowable uses. They recently expanded the affordable housing program option. So once again, it does come with some significant reporting that goes with it. The Riverbank story, our American Rescue Plan funding is an opportunity for the city. It's unlikely that we will have this amount of funding in order, that's flexible, in order to be able to do some of the projects we've had on the back burner. The treasury did allow for agencies to allocate funds or to designate funds as lost revenue, up to $10 million, without requiring any backup documentation. So that basically means that all of the funding becomes discretionary to the city council. So tonight, I would like to get general consensus on how to allocate the funds. We would develop the plan and bring that back for final approval, with funds actually allocated out, dollar amounts allocated to each, for council adoption, most likely in consent. So just, I'm going to over this one here. One of the things that we want to highlight are, what have we used our funds on already? So we did allocate funds for COVID-19 mitigation early last year at our city parks and our city facilities. We had staff on hand that was continually doing disinfection at our parks and our city facilities. So I thank Sue and her staff very much for taking time from their already busy schedules to make sure that our residents are safe at our parks and that our employees were safe at our city facilities. Purchased this Sierra House for our emergency shelter. We were able to obtain the ESC grant from the county, which is what is allowing us to rehabilitate the home and remodel it. We purchased the Jackson and Sanosoff property, which is going to be our transitional housing site. We allocated funds towards the energy efficiency project with SiteLogic. We did security improvements at our city wells and our lift stations. And we have provided hazard pay for our city employees who were with us every step of the way as we navigated this pandemic. So this now goes into $2.8 million that is left unallocated of the $5.9 that we have received. So I'm going to highlight a variety of programs that some of us have discussed individually, some programs that have been discussed collectively, and a few programs that we have implemented in the past that we may want to look at bringing back, as well as looking at other infrastructure and improvements that have been placed on the back burner due to lack of funding. So initially, we're looking at grant programs. We would like to initiate a downtown facade improvement program. We are looking at designing a program that can be either, A, a forgivable loan program so that we get some buy-in from our downtown businesses, and/or a grant program for them, which would include matching funds, so that there is that buy-in from those businesses. Second is the BOLT program grants for our residents and our graduating seniors. For those who are not familiar with the BOLT program, it is a technical trade school that is run in Modesto and provides training in a variety of different fields, including mechanical maintenance, which is a highly sought-after trade, and that it is something that some of our businesses that are located at the Riverbank Industrial Complex are looking for and will be looking for. So this would be a huge benefit to be able to provide grant programs for residents who are looking for a new trade, have suffered through COVID, have not been able to get back into the field that they're working in, to be able to have that opportunity to learn that trade. And for our graduating seniors, not all of our graduating seniors have an opportunity to go to college, some may be looking at opportunities for trade tech schools. And so we feel that being able to provide grants to seniors in our community would be of benefit. I've had a discussion with the superintendent of Riverbank Unified School District, and she was very excited about being able to offer this to graduating seniors. We would look to offer this to graduating seniors who are from Riverbank. And so that would mean we would open that up to seniors from Enoch High, as well as higher highs, since we do have Riverbank residents who attend those. And Delhanson, yes. A future COVID-19 mitigation, because that still continues, and premium pay is another item that we want to be able to look at as well for other city employees. One of the items that was initially discussed back in May of 2021 was looking at more social media marketing or branding. One of the suggestions that I had from Councilmember Hernandez was to be able to streamline and make it more consistent in terms of our social media postings and all of our external communications to our residents, where it's easily visible that the information is coming from the City of Riverbank, whether that means our social media postings are consistent in their look and their design, in the type of fonts that we use, etc., so that any staff member would be able to come in, easily pick up that template, and plug in information that we want to get out to our city residents. So just depending on the media, we would have different templates, whether it be for publication in the newspaper or publication on our social media sites, our website, or our newsletter. But it's all consistent from media to media, so that it's very visual to tell that it's coming from the city. Park improvements, this is a major opportunity for us to be able to provide funding for park improvements. Parks is an area that is, tends to be left behind because the majority of it is funded through the general fund. And the general fund typically has limited funding available in order to address our parks or to be able to address new parks within areas that don't have a landscape and lighting district already established. Our landscape and lighting district have funding that is provided annually by the residents in those areas in order to make sure that we're maintaining those parks within their neighborhoods. Especially our older areas of town do not have that same funding. And so we rely on the general fund to be able to do some of the projects within those areas. And if we're very extremely lucky, we may get a grant here and there to be able to address that. But once again, those are always difficult to come by. Sue has worked very diligently to apply for as many grants as possible, and we just not have been as successful as we would like. So this is our opportunity to look at making improvements in Jacob Myers Park. A lot of upgrades so that we can allow for additional residents to come into our site, and also to ensure their safety while they're there as well. And then being able to extend our trail. We've been having discussions with the Army Corps in order to be able to extend our trail out into areas that currently do not have trails. And so we want to be able to provide funding in order to make those improvements. We are about 98% close on being able to get the authority to be able to do the work. And they would provide a lot of the guidance and assistance. We would just need to be able to provide the funding for that. We're also looking at additional shade structures at some of our parks. Looking at Castleburg Park and be able to have some shade near our baseball fields where our bleachers are located, so that our residents, which, that's an area that gets highly used because it is one of the very few baseball fields we have here in Riverbank, just for comfort, more use of our parks. And then also looking at our playgrounds and some of our other public spaces, such as, of a Del Rio across the street. So, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And then looking at future park sites. We know that parks is a very important quality of life area for our residents. And when they're looking at the purchase of their home, they're looking at how near our schools, how near our parks. So we want to be able to provide for future park sites. One of the discussions- One of the discussions that we've had, um, internally is a portion of the property that was purchased at Jackson and Stanislaus to be able to provide a park site there because there currently is not a park anywhere near that neighborhood. Um, so we think it would be important to be able to provide a small portion of that property for a park site. And then looking at infrastructure and facility improvements, looking at being able to provide, um, funding for the infrastructure that's needed for, uh, EV charging stations or electric vehicle charging stations, um, looking at being able to allocate funds now that the dirt's going to be picked up at the community center is to go ahead and allow Site Logic to install the infrastructure for two charging stations at the community center. And, or provide for a private-public partnership with Galaxy Theater to install a EV charging station there. And that was one of the areas identified by Stan Cog in their, um, electric vehicle infrastructure study that was recently performed as one of the best sites currently available to be able to offer that service app. Um, the reason being is that they are serviced by M I D, and M I D can easily, um, handle, um, the additional, uh, infrastructure. So we would look at the possibility of being able to provide funding to install the infrastructure, and then we would apply for grants to actually install the charging stations themselves. Those grants would be through the air pollution control board. Uh, Seventh Street Storm Drain, this has been an item that has been on the city's radar for probably at least ten years, yes. Um, Seventh Street is a storm drain line that feeds directly to the river. Ten years ago, it failed. We did some initial work to shore it up. It's starting to fail again. We've kind of delayed it because we've been able to baby it along, but I think now is our opportunity to do the work that needs to be done to make sure that there is a permanent solution to that. Another area is looking at safety fencing at our, uh, Riverbank Police Services. This has been something that the chief has been working on for quite some time, um, and that we would like to continue to be able to explore, uh, finalize those plans and go out to bid for that. And then an item that came up, and for those who were in attendance of our centennial, um, we used our stage quite a bit that day, um, a lot of big, uh, audio needs that are in the area, and so there's a lot of equipment we tend to need to bring in, um, is looking at a downtown audio system, and it's actually at a pretty reduced cost, it was no more than twenty thousand dollars in order to be able to provide an audio system that would cover not just the plaza itself, but would go from Topeka all the way down to, I think, Stanislaus, and from Second Street all the way down to Fourth Street. So we would have, um, the ability to protect, um, whatever event we've had going on at the state, um, at Plaza Delta Downtown. And that is the end of my report. Um, so as I mentioned, what I am hoping to receive today is consensus on a number of these programs so that I can come back with a final allocation, um, for, for, for consideration.
All of those have, uh, benefits. One of the items of, if you're going to do a downtown facade, uh, whatever you spend for the downtown facade, I'd like to have it sent aside for rental assistance to nonprofits as, if business is available because we look, need the residents. One of the items we have been acting in is the ability to translate anything that you're looking at when, when you're in social media, that is one area that we've been calving, but we need to serve. Um, when we're doing these plans, I think every one of our, our beneficial, he's going to have to work out, and we will prioritize as we, like to have it where we want to spend it, however, it are the cost that we, maybe we can do something. All of those are good, but I would like to, when you, when you look at the homeless, uh, the Aggron's money, money that they gave us, set a plan to spend all of that, what is the short haul, maybe ARPA can, or something else that we would reimburse them towards. I would not remove any one of those, I like to talk about the COVID, uh, pay. Give me a cost, I'm not too thrilled with it, but give me a, and we can sit down there. We, as we go through our priorities, and I talked a little bit about a couple, I guess, we, I have any amount there.
Thank you. Okay, um, I would like to see us increase the amount for drought toler- tolerance, uh, landscaping reimbursement, um, increase the amount of programs that, the amount of funding that we have for programs that assist seniors and the disabled, assist, um, businesses, nonprofits with a grant, uh, increase the amount of scholarships we have for youth programs, and buy more adaptable playground equipment for each of our parks, and then take a look at broadbanding and see how, uh, we can extend that.
One, one of the things that you look at when you do this broadbanding, you take a look at the census, nice population have, so take a look at what you really want with that, nice percent maybe. So we, we need to look at things like.
We need to look at.
But we, we did, but we have to look at what do we, what is our definition of, is it abandoned currently. Please, the term, I don't know what, what that.
I'll make a couple comments. So, um, so the, the facade program is one of the items that we've, uh, kind of carried over from the previous strategic plan, I think it makes a lot of sense, uh, spoken with the downtown businesses, but I think it should expand to the downtown specific plans, so like the businesses don't want to wait, uh, can kind of take advantage of this. Um, I like the structure of the facade program, so, so obviously supportive of that. Charging stations at community center, uh, uh, about nineteen, nineteen thousand was about the quote from Site Logic, uh, to put in there, so totally supportive of that, they're already working on the project there. Nonprofit grants, uh, was up there, I mean, it's, it, it ties in with prevention homelessness, right, providing that emergency food, uh, any, you know, homelessness, uh, and just kind of supplying the much, uh, to, like that idea. What we was pointing to the shade structure at Plaza, much needed for there. Yeah, I'm, I'm in full support of all of those, I don't see anything. Oh, and then I did speak to, uh, Donald at Galaxy, uh, he's, he's looking forward to the, to, to, working with us, uh, on getting some more EV charging stations there.
The EV, okay, more on the, uh, EV charging stations, uh, Stanislaus County, municipal government, let's do that with, uh, their plan.
Right.
Please take the lead, please expand our, and we minimize our ability downtown here to, try to get, and, uh, you just. Still good, but it could be something that is not, uh, in the good.
Totally, totally agree with you, and I'm probably wrong here, but I believe, uh, the Stan Cog report was just kind of a, kind of a guidance, kind of a plan, they're not really funded though.
No, no. So I talked to the, 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 just committed resources, I met the, the, their board.
Absolutely.
Ken, done though.
I think that's, I think that's great, either way, either way, we, we can get the grant funding for them, uh, they're already on board, they're fully supportive of this, uh, of this relation.
Well, I'm going to put my two cents in, since we're going to build transitional housing on Jackson Street, I think it's important that we get the park support also because we're getting more young people moving into the area, and they used to be able to play at real often, they can't, there's no place for the community in that area to do anything with the park.
Um, I guess if you're going to put this as a priority, um, the development projects and the ones that, like, the well and the park, um, would be priority, um, and then supporting the grant programs and expand, um, the millennial and who's going to expand on the marketing and branding, um, just having it served is sort of glue in the communications as we move forward and as we grow, um, and being able to expand on that, as, I, I would like to prioritize the actual staff and communication to support everybody, um, and all the programs that we have going on.
And do that in such a way that we still have reserves left, okay?
The finance director and you will never leave.
Hey, is there anyone from the public looking to put their two cents worth in?
Councilmembers and Mayor, Leontons Cruz, and the chairman of the bank, it's Garden Drive. Um, where do I begin? I was dying back there to get up here, so, here we go. First up, I'm here on one hand on behalf of the Downtown Business Book, part of the Downtown Business Coalition, and they are very excited and will be thrilled to hear that it wasn't just lip service paid to them about the facade, they feel like that, and I'm just sharing that with you, they feel like they get a lot of, um, lip service, but there's not a lot of follow-through. An example would be.
Excuse me, I, I will have a comment on that.
I'm just, you don't need to, it, it, don't shoot the messenger, I'm here on behalf of some constituents, and I'm telling you how they feel so that maybe you guys can address some of that, please don't take offense to it, I'm just sharing, okay? Please, please note that. Um, downtown, the example would be electronic signs, when the electronic signs came up, they were very excited, they have wanted signs out there, they wanted to do this electronic sign. Yeah, it's offered to them, but they have to pay for it, and it wasn't presented like that, they're a little frustrated, so, and they, they would never come here and tell you that, so I can and I'm going to on, on their behalf, because they told that to me, and I know the ladies heard some of it too, and we'll move forward. Uh, they are very excited about the facade project. They would like to see lights down here before they put in speakers and music, they have requested lights, and we have lights out there, it's awesome, but what they really want, and they all, it was the one thing that every single one of those business owners, and if you've ever been to one of those meetings, they are all over the place, but it was one thing that they could all agree on, they would love to have lights down here that are LED lights that would change for the seasons, orange for Halloween, red and green for the holidays, they're set up, uh, electronically, they shine on the trees from down below, um, they're so excited about that, so I don't know if we can move that up to maybe one of the priority list, I think it would look fantastic out there, it would look fabulous, and you know, our image matters, and, um, I just, I would love to see that, and they would too, on their behalf. Um, electronic signs, lights for the trees and the facade, um, parking, and, uh, just so you folks know, I preach to them at every single meeting, until each and every one of those business owners are willing to park behind their buildings, don't bother coming to a council meeting to talk about parking. So with that said, um, parking, I remember a former, uh, city manager was saying, if we ever had a parking issue downtown, it would be a blessing. You know what, we're there. We now have buildings that are filled, we have people coming to downtown to enjoy these restaurants in this beautiful place that we have, so we need to worry about parking. And so I know that there's some stuff going on, but parking is an issue down there, and so you probably won't hear from the Downtown Business Folks about parking because until they're ready to park their cars behind their buildings, I told them not to bother, but it is an issue, so that's another, um, item on that list. Um, please take this with, uh, with a, with a grain of salt, but this council meeting was a really long one, and these chairs out here are extremely hard to sit in, three hours, I guarantee if these chairs were up there on the dais, there'd be new chairs out here next week, they're that bad. I was just wondering if we could put that on the list, or we could work on getting the chamber council with some of the carpet fixed up, the TVs haven't worked for the last three meetings that I've been to, it's extremely hard to see when you're sitting in the back corner, any of the presentations, you guys have some amazing presentations, but the folks out here can't see them. Um, the, the mics, the speakers out here, cause this is strange feedback that I can no longer wear my hearing aids in here, so I have to remove my hearing aids before I walk into the building because of the feedback, so I'm kind of at a disadvantage sometimes, yeah, I can hear, but the feedback is so bizarre out here that I actually have to remove them physically, I don't even have to, I can't turn them down or off, I have to actually remove them, so I don't know if anyone was aware of that. Um, what else, um, one more thing. I just think our image for this town is an important one, the image that we send is where, where we're at and where we're going, and I think I'm psyched about the social media, um, aspect of that, I would love to see some more improvement in that area, and I'd like to see that on the, on the list there. Um, I had someone ask me, um, as I was out and about, talking to folks in the neighborhoods, if there was any way that they could link the live meetings to some of those neighborhood pages, I don't know, I have no idea, so that might be something we can look into also. They were wanting to get a link for the live feeds to be posted on some of those neighborhood sites on social media, I have no idea. So I look forward to working with all you in the future, thank you for your time.
Well, I would like to see the, the, I just, I still believe it is private property, that is one of the, and, hiding them.
So I do, Mayor, that's, that is why we are encouraging that in our policy it be either a forgivable loan or it be a matching grant, um, so that both parties have buy-in into the, into the situation. With regards to the A V in here, we do sincerely apologize for all of the issues we have, um, we did approve, um, a contract with a new A V company who's literally going to come in, rip everything out and put it back in because it's what we need, um, so we are working with them, unfortunately, we are dealing with the supply issues, um, for a lot of electronics that we need.
Any other comments? Uh, who are you parking, are you public or staff?
You know that.
Okay.
There's, there's a phone in my office you could always use.
That was on the list. Address that particular problem the first year of it, and over time, and it does fail, we have a very large portion of the old section of town, but. Well, do you have a figure and a funding source and? You would use it all.
We have the figures, Mayor, so you will see that.
Okay, you have direction?
I have direction, thank you. So next time I will come back with an official plan. It will be prioritized, um, based on immediate need and then some of the different wants that, that City Council has stated.
Okay, now the last one is eleven fourth, designation of a new voting delegate and alternate to attend the twenty, twenty-two League of California Cities Annual Conference.
So at the last meeting, we did designate Mayor O'Brien as the primary and Vice Mayor Campbell as the alternate. Unfortunately, travel plans have changed for the mayor. So I would like to recommend tonight with the concurrence of the City Council to be able to move Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Campbell, excuse me, um, up to the primary position and then be able to elect an alternate in the event that he's not able to attend. Um, that would need to be either Councilmember Barbara Martinez or Councilmember Hernandez, um, as Councilmember Uribe, um, will be traveling, um, earlier that day of the general meeting. I do wanna highlight that you have probably missed the fact that there are no resolutions on tonight's agenda. That is because there were no resolutions brought forward. That does not mean that there will not be procedural items that will need to be voted on. Um, so we do wanna make sure that we are represented at that general meeting. So I will let the two of you duke it out or we can flip a coin, whatever you'd like to do.
I understand, I think. Um, I, I'll do the alternate.
Oh, primary.
Primary, yes.
If they come up with something to use the vote on, am I going, usually we vote on it here, so.
Deadline has passed for that. So they would have already released that because all of the agencies would need to have obtained feedback.
Okay, there is a procedure to create one at the conference and I've been involved with those, I'm not gonna be this year. They can, uh, still bring one. But most likely will not.
Yeah, at that time you would just vote, vote your conscience, exactly. Yeah.
Well, good one. Vote gracefully, conscious, Hernandez too.
We have faith in you. So
Is there any public comment on this? Bring it back. We have, uh, a designation of Vice Mayor as the primary and secondary is Councilmember Hernandez. We have consideration. Second. Okay, so we have motion to approve in a second. Go call.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you on that. I did have to take. Um, item twelve one, staff support.
Uh, so for tonight, um, I do want to invite, um, both the City Council and members of our public to the ribbon cutting ceremony for Countryside Park. It has been quite some time since we've been able to, um, be able to celebrate a new park within our city limits. Countryside Park is located at sixty-one forty-five Beagle Drive. So that's Beagle as in the dog. Um, and it will be held on Saturday, September seventeenth, um, at ten o'clock AM. So we do want to encourage everybody to attend. Um, I want to thank all the members of the public who attended all of our centennial events throughout the year. We were very pleased that the City Council provided us with the funding and the opportunity to offer all of these different events for members of the public. Um, to be able to celebrate this hundred years, um, since the city's incorporation. Uh, we hope to be able to continue to provide some of those events in the future, um, so that we can continue to celebrate, uh, many years to come. I also want to take this opportunity to thank members of my administration staff, particularly Gabby Hernandez, when it came to all of the work, um, done on preparing for each one of those events. I want to thank all of the parks and recreation staff who prepared all of our city facilities and made sure that our parks were pristine so that you, so that we could highlight all of the beauty that we have in those facilities, um, at our events. And of course, to the public work staff for all of their efforts to make sure that we were all safe at those events in terms of street closures. Um, being there to assist us in preparing for it, setting up items. Um, so I do appreciate. And then of course, the Sheriff's Department for all of their assistance, um, at each event as well. And making sure that all of our residents were safe. Some of the safety features that we saw, um, were a result of the discussions with the Sheriff's Department. So we definitely appreciate, um, their guidance on that. That, we have no other steps.
Thank you. Councilmember Hernandez?
Um, I did want to note that I don't think there's any way for social media to, to have a direct link to our live meetings. Um, but if possible, I wanna work with the staff to be able to add the link easier on our social media pages so that it's accessible. Cause I know you do have to do a little digging on the website to be able to access it. Um, we, the City Council and City Manager attended Back to School Night, uh, for Meslo Riverdale and California Abinian Elementary Schools. And, um, it was a great event. It was super organized. Um, both events were translated live in Spanish for, uh, the schools, the parents and the students. And, um, we were also able to translate to the mayor's, uh, comments.
And thank you for that.
And, um, I think it, it just brought a really good connection for the school district to have the City Council there. And we were actually approached by a parent who, who, who's child wanted to meet us and, and get involved with some of the park, um, concerns that they had going on. Um, and then also I wanted to mention Riverbank. Um, we, I have a semi-committee formed to start moving forward to the planning of next year. Um, I do wanna have it open still for others that are interested in it, but, um, we have some movement, so more to come.
Okay, Councilmember Uribe?
Thank you, Mayor. So the, uh, Kiwi's Custom Guns is holding their ribbon cutting event this Friday, the twenty-sixth, uh, at three, 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 two Santa Fe Street. Uh, come check it out. It'll be, I believe, at ten AM. It's gonna be, you know, highlighting their state of the art indoor gun range. Uh, the annual, annual community barbecue, uh, in, in relationship with, or, uh, in conjunction with, uh, Chief right now and the entire council here. Uh, will be August twenty-seventh from eleven AM to one PM. It's gonna be at Troval Park, fifty-eight hundred Antique Roadway. Uh, come check out Airsport K nine, Bomb and SWAT team. Uh, it's gonna be free for all Riverbank residents. Uh, and finally, the Santa Claus Equity Partners is, uh, partnering up with SBDC and they're holding a business competition. So kinda think of like Shark Tank kind of. Uh, so businesses will get to pitch their business to three judges and one of the five businesses is located here in Riverbank. Uh, so please come out for that small business. It's gonna be on eight thirty from five thirty PM to eight PM at the Weave Center in Modesto. That's eight two zero H Street, uh, in Modesto. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Um, I attended the Shaw meeting, um, which is the Santa Claus Homeless Alliance. Modesto was looking at a safe parking place for those that are homeless and are, uh, sleeping in their cars. There's a pilot program for six months. You just wanna check it out and see. And so there are a lot of restrictions for it. So, um, they're not quite sure how many people will, you know, take up, uh, the opportunity. And I just wanna mention our mural that's across the street. Um, I think it's really, it was, uh, a really awesome piece of art and you can truly see, you can truly see the history of our city from the beginning to where, very beginning to where we are today. So I appreciate the artist and I just, uh, wanna mention that. And, uh, that's all. I think that's been said.
Thank you, Budser. I think the drones that the, uh, presentation that the sheriff, uh, presented tonight were very good and I think it's going to be the future to help us assist the police better in each community. Likewise, I wanna thank the staff, the citizens and everybody that was involved in coming to our centennial on Saturday. I thought it was very good. I can see that after the light show, there's a possibility that fireworks are gonna go away because, uh, it was really a fantastic show. And I also attended the school connection along with Councilmember Martinez, we went into and my, uh, also Councilmember Rachel. And I think it's really good because we're reaching out and making contact with the schools once. I'm hoping that this will develop more so that there's more interaction between the council and the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just like the, I think that the, uh, one hundredth celebration throughout the year was fine, excellent. Like to ca- carry over some of those, uh, events, uh, on and, uh, as a council, we should decide when we would like to carry over the event. And it showcased our city not only for just one year, but it's representative. With that, we're going to go to close session. Um, item thirteen one, Conference of Labor Negotiators, Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six. Agency representative, Parissa Garcia, City Manager, Unrepresented Employee Parks and Recreation Director. Is there anyone wishing to make any comment on this before we go to close session? And, uh, we are adjourned to
Mayor, there's also item thirteen point two.
Oh, Public Employment pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven, uh, Public Works Director. But it has me going to adjournment right after that. We are going to, um, adjourn to close.
Adjourn to closing. Adjourn to close.